Mr. Floor Leader, I think we are now in the period of the privilege hour.
Yes, Honorable Chair. Is there any member of this August body who wish to avail their privilege? Please raise your hand. Since nobody is raising their hands, Honorable Chair.
Okay, may we proceed with the reading of the minutes of the previous session?
Honorable Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the previous minutes of our session.
Okay, there is a motion to dispense the reading. Julie's seconded by the Honorable Ian Sabion. Any objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Honorable Chair, I move for the approval of the minutes of the previous session.
Okay, there is a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous session. Seconded by Honorable Mahasim. Any discussion, amendments, any corrections, objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved. Madam Secretary for the Reference of Business.
For the Reference of Business, under other communications, letter A, annual budget for CY 2023 of Barangay Poblacion.
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the committee on appropriation.
Refer this matter to committee on appropriations.
Letter B, supplemental budget number one for CY 2023 of Barangay's Makilas Tumitom Interso Babierra.
Honorable Chair, I move that this also be referred to the committee on appropriation.
Refer to committee on appropriations.
Item C, we have here the SK annual budget for CY 2023 of Barangay's Pangi and Buluan.
Honorable Chair, I move that same be referred to the committee on appropriation.
Refer to committee on appropriations.
Item D, Julie endorsed from the municipal mayor is the request of the MSWD for a resolution endorsing the two barangays as participants of the 2023 Sustainable Livelihood Program or SLP to the DSWD, barangays Bagda Oop for the bottled sardines production and barangay Timalang for the fresh miki making production.
Mr. Chair everybody. Mr. Floor Leader.
Honorable Chair, I move to pass a resolution endorsing the request of the honorable mayor.
Any seconded motion? Julie's seconded, discussion? Any clarifications? Amendments, objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
We are now the committee report, sir.
Okay, Mr. Floor Leader for the committee report.
We are now on committee report. Is there anybody in this honorable chamber who has committee report? Please raise your hand. Honorable Catalunya, you have the floor.
Committee Report Number 158. Committee referral, a committee referral, a letter from the municipal health office Julie endorsed from the office of the mayor regarding the memorandum of agreement of FB Pharmacy and AJ Diagnostics. Committee findings and recommendation. Upon review of pertinent documents, it was found out that there is already an existing MOA between the LGU and FB Pharmacy and between the LGU and AJ Diagnostics dated November 9, 2022 with resolution number 111572022 and resolution number 111582022 respectively. Further, the above mentioned MOA has effectivity of three years and presently is still in effect as no appeal for termination is presented. The committee therefore at this time need to take no pertinent action as the existing MOA is still in place.
Okay, well noted. Adoption? We can only move for the adoption of the committee report.
Ah, move for the adoption of the committee report.
Any seconded motion? Julie's seconded. Any objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Any other committee report from the members? Please raise your hand. Honorable Turalba, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Floor. I have here four committee reports on the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization. Committee Report Number 154. The subject is the La Residencia Delia Homeowners Association, Incorporated, requesting for a resolution interposing no objection of their proposed subdivision project to be located in barangay tawai of this municipality. The remarks and recommendation, the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization to which was referred above stated request refer this matter to the Municipal Planning and Development Office for proper review and evaluation. Last June 13, 2023, the MPDC head engineer Nymfasi Diputado had a written recommendation addressed to this committee for the passing of resolution interposing no objection for the above request of La Residencia Delia Homeowners Association, Incorporated. Therefore, the committee recommends for its approval. I move, Mr. Chair, for the adoption of this committee report number 154.
Give a second to the motion for the adoption of the committee report. Seconded by Honorable Wal. Discussion? Any objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution approving the request of La Residencia Delia Homeowners Association, Incorporated, interposing no objection of their proposed subdivision project to be located in barangay tawai of this municipality.
Any seconded motion? Julie's seconded by Honorable Wal. Discussion? Any clarifications? Amendments, objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, committee report number 155 still on committee on appropriation. The subject is the barangay annual budget 2023 of barangay Tumitom amounting to 2,373,887 pesos and 13 centavos and barangay Sanito amounting to 11,430,000 pesos. The remarks and recommendations, the committee on appropriation to which was referred the barangay annual budget 2023 of barangay Tumitom and barangay Sanito of this municipality for review, evaluation and approval. This said, barangay annual budget 2023 has been referred to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety upon its approval subject to the posting requirements under section 59 of RA 7160 and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the local government unit must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section 305 of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provision of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval provided that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines procedures in the budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service laws, budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this committee report number 155.
Any objections? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Committee Report Number 156 still in the committee on appropriation. The subject is the Sanggunyang Kapataan Annual Budget, calendar year 2023 of barangay poblacion amounting to 804,652 and 10 centavos barangay domandan, 209,996 pesos and barangay bakalan, 631,941 and 40 centavos. The remarks and recommendations, the committee on appropriation to which was referred the Sanggunyang Kapataan Annual Budget CY 2023 of barangay poblacion, barangay domandan, and barangay bakalan of this municipality for review, evaluation, and approval. This said, Sanggunyang Kapataan Annual Budget CY 2023 has been referred to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety upon its approval subject to the posting requirements under section 59 of RA 7160 and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the local government unit must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section 305 of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval provided that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines procedures in the budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service laws, budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. I move for the adoption of this committee report of the committee on appropriation, Mr. Chair.
Any seconded motion? Discussion? Any objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Last committee report number 157 still on the committee on appropriation. The subject is Sanggunyang Kapataan Supplemental Budget Number 01-2023 of barangay tawai amounting to 381 pesos, 440 and 70 centavos. The committee on appropriation to which was referred the Sanggunyang Kapataan Supplemental Budget Number 01-2023 of barangay tawai of this municipality for review, evaluation, and approval. This said, barangay supplemental budget 2023 has been referred to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety upon its approval subject to the posting requirements under section 59 of RA 7160 and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the local government unit must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section 305 of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval provided that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines procedures in the budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service laws, budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. To this, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the committee report number 157 of the committee on appropriation.
Any seconded motion? For the adoption?
Seconded.
Seconded. Julie's seconded. Any discussion? Objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
That would be all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, Honorable Turalba, the resolution for approval and declaring it in full force.
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution approving the barangay annual budget 2023 of barangay Tumitom amounting to 2,373,887 and 30 cents and barangay Sanito 11,430,000. Approving for its...
Declaring?
Declaring the annual budget of these two barangay operative in its entirety.
Give me second to the motion? Discussion? Any clarifications, amendments, objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Another, Mr. Chair, resolution. A resolution declaring the SK supplemental budget number 01-23 of barangay tawai amounting to 381,440 pesos and 70 centavos declaring... to be in full force and effect.
Give me second to the motion? Discussion? Any amendments, objections? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Another resolution, Mr. Chair, declaring the SK annual budget of CY 2023 of barangay poblacion amounting to 804,652 and 10 cents barangay domandan, 209,996 pesos and barangay bakalan, 631,941 pesos and 40 centavos declaring it's... to be in full force and effect.
Give me second to the motion? Seconded. Discussion? Objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Any other committee report? Please raise your hand. Honorable Ramos? Honorable Wal? Honorable Sabion? Honorable Masin? We are through with the committee report, Honorable Chair.
Can we proceed, Mr. Floor Leader, with other matters? Period of other matters? Any other concerns that you'd like to raise?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Other matters? Mr. Chair, I move for... I move for the... for a resolution. Before that, Mr. Chair, I move for the suspension of the rules.
Rule suspended.
Mr. Chair, our local treasury, our municipal treasurer's office discussed with us because we are on the revision of our revenue code. So, the municipal treasurer's office provide for information to this August body, the 100, top 100 business establishments who paid their taxes with diligence. Kaya mauman ng ilang istorya at opuning na nakahinabi ang ato ang mga taxpayers. Kaya ang ilang rason, most of them, they replied me, "What is due to the government?" Give it to the government. So, I move, Mr. Chair, giving recognition to the top 100 business establishments of this municipality, top outstanding business taxpayers of this municipality. And further, I move that they will be recognized during the Araw ng Ipil on July 26, 2023, Mr. Chair.
Any second to that motion? Seconded by Honorable Sabion. Discussion? Any amendments, objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
No more, Mr. Chair. The holder of the motion for adjournment is not around, Mr. Chair, anybody?
Yes, before the adjournment, Honorable Sarapi Ramos.
Before we adjourn, I would like to inquire to the secretaries, guro, as to the status of the deduplusion with respect to kanang owner of the lot. Kala manaitay, bitaw iduin manaitay and mercy lina, mas guro. Maaman, ya.
Committee level?
Yeah, they are... So, they are willing to donate the 3 meters width from the diversion road way here, satong Mucipyo. And the other lot also, the other owner is willing to donate 3 meters width. So, making it 6 meters in width. Para kasal diba? Kaya they understand that the mayor planning to cross the road, fencing that road. So, kala mga taon-taon dito, dili na makaagidre, dili na makaaridre. Kaya what am I? So, when we open that road, so, we have another access road going there, sa diversion road aside from this road. Kala bitaw g, dun g, siminto sa... Siya na rin siminto, ya.
Asangan siminto, sir.
Kala pa na, biyan dito.
Can I hear you, sir? Let me passulug na to ano deryna?
Oh.
Or Trebilio Street?
Trebilio Street.
Ah, Trebilio Street.
Oh, pero diwan who donated that inkongreteng that road, katong probinsano. So, mora, there is a remaining portion of their donated portion na para ikorral dyan. Sa mungu, ya.
Sige, so fast track. Naman ako ang committee chair dery, sa committee on land use since that matter was being referred to committee on land use. Sa papotun ato sila, sir, mo render sa committee report.
Mr. Chair, tomorrow is the second public hearing sa ato ang revised revenue code. Sir, masay mo makwanan ni sir?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Aduna lang ko'y comment considering that Honorable Santay Kapering, isong kon official raben to pagdyan city to ten de God seminar. Ya, siya raw bagyo akong pambato, kaya. Kontak d'yan, gon. Ya, data public hearing maguna, kursian. Kursian. So, I would like to thank nga, siguro, ang committee members mora, Honorable Nepalang, signifaysa sa air kon, yang motuk sembangga. Pero, kubalik unudain siya. Ibetag ibalo, kung hapon na mabuka balik.
Okay.
Morana, I would like to request all of us to be present dery. Kaya mora, apike kay kaku reditem lubog sa mga puta.
Okay, with regards to that matter, no? Being your...
Thank you.
Being the presiding officer, as much as I would like to be there on that public hearing kaya gustugin po kumuobserve, maminaw, makatabang. Timing po nga, kung ano, for the information of everybody nga di po kaadto tungod kay Largang, Sebu, Uma to be with my wife on her ikapilanan nga, prenatal nga checkup. So, rest assured, sa final nga public hearing, under 29th, makaadto dugo na, sir. Hopefully, makatabang po explain sa'to mga business businessmen, kabahin sa'to ang pagreby sa'to revenue code. Pero, sa uban nga naa, uka kaan ni, so mong hihangyo nga, makaattend po tabang sa pagdefend sa maong public hearing with regards to the revision of the revenue code.
So, I have in mind, yeah.
Mr. Chair, previous motion?
Yes.
Rest ass, Mr. Chair, for five minutes.
Okay, recess for five minutes. Okay, recess for five minutes.
Okay.
Okay na, solved na, okay. 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 Okay, very good. Okay, so, any more concern?
Uh, in connection with the uh, continuation of the public hearing tomorrow, Mr. Chair, still may we request the presence of our uh, PNP personnel.
Okay.
Oo, para at least napusil eh.
And all other concerns like katong mga CR?
Oo, CR, of course, ang atong comfort rooms, sound system. Ah snacks na'to.
Then ang enough number sa mga lingkuranan?
Oo, katunang agi kulang ang lingkuranan.
Ah sige, so, I concern nato ang secretary, with regards to this, sa last nga public hearing that was scheduled on the 27th, ba'to? 29th, so, the 28th will be a holiday, so the following day ang atong session, so delay pwede nga maka-public hearing sa 29th. So it will be moved sa on the 30th. Or... Earlier? Okay, pwede sa 29th sa hapon? Bista? Sa 7 na na? Ah recess, okay recess. Okay, back to order. Okay, there was a motion for adjournment. Any second to the motion for adjournment. Seconded, so the 50th regular session is now adjourned.